Again, so we'll start the roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. Winear?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Song?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
The pledge of allegiance. Kyle, if you'd like to do the honors. That's used in D.C. and everywhere so many times.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Second.
Brandon Moose, second? Seconds. Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yeah.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes. So, consent agenda items. First item is supplements from the previous meeting. Second, approve substitute teacher list number eight as presented by the Fairfield County Educational Service Center. Tenth at two in our packet accept the red nation A of Hannah Howes K-12 intervention teacher effective at the end of the 1920s school year. And B, Jordan Lee Transportation Supervisor effective three ten twenty dependent upon hiring on three nine twenty as Transportation Maintenance and Custodial Maintenance Supervisor. Then item four, accept donations from TS Trim in the amount of $6,000 earmarked for the K-2 building. Is there a motion?
I'm here.
Brandon Moose, seconds? Just in seconds. Discussion?
I just want, no, no donation is any more valuable than the other, but this is the second or third time TS Trim has made this kind of a donation for the K-2 building. I'm very appreciative of what they're doing, so I do thank them greatly.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes. Public participation. Morgan Anderson, FA president.
Good evening. Like you said, my name is Morgan Anderson and I am the newly elected FA chapter president. And today I would meet my vice president, Stephanie Bowers. I am replacing Julian Scott. She has retired as our senior officer, so I will be recapping with you guys for the next year. So with that being said, in the past month as a chapter, we have held our annual monthly I breakfast, our February FFA meeting where we elected said 2020, 2021 officer meeting, officer team under the advisory of Mr. Sharp and Mr. Killen. We went on our annual top fall fundraisers trip in Louisville, Kentucky, sent our young group members to the two twelve leadership conference, as well as attended the Young Leaders Conference at the Ohio State University. As far as career development events go, our agricultural communications team placed second in the entire state of Ohio. Our Green Hand Quiz team, which competes out of over 2,500 members, placed eighth in the state of Ohio. And then our public speakers, we had one of them place fourth in the state of Ohio, as well as one placed second in the state of Ohio. And then we had a freshman placed within the top six of the state of Ohio. And then in the next month, we will be competing in nine different state level contests, holding another FFA meeting, as well as preparing for our upcoming Green Hand Quiz in May. Lastly, I'd like to add that we have six members that have qualified for their state FFA degrees and will receiving those at the 92nd Ohio FFA Convention in May. On top of that, we have two members receiving their American FFA degrees at the National FFA Convention, which is the highest degree any FFA member can earn. We also had three members receive honorable titles with their proficiency awards. And I'd like to really point out that our senior Sierra Andrews placed within the top four in the state of Ohio for her veterinary science CDE at the Amanda Animal Hospital. And as of this month, it has been nothing short of hard work that has been equivalent to all this success that I wanted to point out to you all. And I'd like to end by saying thank you for allowing us as students to be provided this growth as not only FFA members, but as individuals that are going to graduate high school. Thank you.
Student liaisons.
All right, we're back. We haven't retired. You're still stuck with us. So, let's recap some of the things that we're going to be doing this coming month. The band has a lot of things going on right now. We have a concert tomorrow, March 10th. You're all welcome to come if you want to support the band. However, that's not the only opportunity you'll have this week. We also have a band performance at Taze Valley High School at 7:00 P.M. this Friday, where we'll be given a grade or a rating based on how we do in a few different things, which we'd be playing the songs we've been working on and then also sight reading, which is just another element of that. Academic challenge, we compete on Wednesday, March 11th in the, I guess, the mid-state league division tournament here. So you're also welcome to come and participate or at least view that. Or maybe ask Mr. Heidel, our advisor, if he needs anyone to fill any positions yet, because I'm sure he's still, I need some people to help run rooms. But that should be pretty interesting. We have fourth seed?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's been done in quite a while.
We have fourth seed and we've beaten the second and third seeds already this year.
And the first seed.
Yeah, we've beaten the first and second.
Discounted Fisher Catholic. They don't actually participate because they already move on. They just, they just move on automatically, so they don't participate in our tournament. But back to the band, the chocolate peanut butter egg sale is currently underway. If you want to get chocolate peanut butter eggs, they're five dollars a piece. They're delicious. Can't turn them down. Orders are due next Friday, so find a band member and I recommend them, but that's just me. I think a lot of other people would agree to them.
Yeah, I would.
And then March 27th and 28th, the Drama Club is releasing their production. The, probably about 6:00 P.M. Again, times haven't been completely finalized for that because we're still working on figuring out just how long the production will last. Just because it's a little variable, because it's relatively long, probably about two hours is a pretty good guess just because usually we haven't run about that long. But it could go longer because it is a little more material than the last couple of years have been. But probably a good guess would be about 6:00 or 7:00 P.M. the night of Friday the 27th and also Saturday the 28th. We'll have two different productions of that. So if you'd like to come view what the Drama Club's been working on all year, welcome to come and do that. I'll pass it over to Kyle here.
A few other things that are happening is that our NHS inductions are going to be happening this Thursday, March 12th at 7:00 P.M. This is a really big event for those students and I know Aaron and I are both in NHS and I'm fairly certain those two right there are going to be inducted into NHS. And it does give us opportunity and gives us a lot of community service opportunity in the next years. There's going to be a Hostler trip to Capital University on Tuesday, March 17th. These trips are really beneficial to the students that are in those groups because they get to get the hands-on experience that's really going to separate them from other students when they're applying for schools, applying for scholarships and different things like that. The senior movie in lunch is going to be on March 27th. And our first track meet, which I'm part of the team, is going to be on March 28th. The first round of acceptance for the Career Center took place last week and A.C. had 35 sophomores get accepted to Eastland Fairfield Career Centers. This is the highest number of accepted students in the first round in quite a few years, so it is just really big for us. I want to touch on Morgan talking about FFA. I do really want to thank you guys for your incredible support for the FFA chapter. I'm, I just recently received my state FFA degree and I'm planning on applying for state office at the end of the year for FFA. So without your guys' support of that program, I really wouldn't have fallen in love with agriculture and that's kind of what I want to go into for my job in the future. So really thank you guys for your support of that program. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right, that was all we had. Public participation. If there's any. Move on to the treasure report.
Okay, in your packet, you receive the financial summary, our five-year board report and financial trends, along with the fund sum, the pin sum, our checks report and our bank reconciliation. So in a nutshell, for February, our general fund revenue was $2,472,866. Our revenue sources included our normal, our state foundation settlements, investment earnings, student fees and tuition. We did have property tax advances in February. We had two draws of property tax advances and we took both of those for a total of $1,544,000. Our advanced disbursements, they don't include any fees. So when we get the settlement this month, then that's when our fees will come out, so you'll see that. We've started to receive our SF-6 tuition this month. This tuition is for any students for excess costs that we've claimed for. So there are students that are not ours, but we're educating them and we bill back for additional services for them because we paid more than what we had received. So this month alone, we received $31,521. In our February expenditures, general fund expenditures were $1,543,462. Our total checks written for all of our accounts was $1,863,591. When you're looking at your five-year board report, you'll see that we've spent less this time last year in all categories, with the exception of salary and wages and the supplies. So as a resident district, if one of our special ed students goes elsewhere, we can be billed for their education too where they're going. And so kind of how I was telling you, the excess costs that we are trying to recoup in our revenue, we're actually having to spend back out. It's for 18, 19 school year. And our excess cost expenditures for this month was $5,355. So overall, our February general fund revenues did exceed our expenditures by $929,404. Due to the way the revenues are received, those tax advances always do that to us this month. Receipts to date are $10,929,637. This is up over $420,000 from this time last year. Our expenditures to date, $11,508,250. This is down $686,000 from last year. Again, a significant portion of those expenditures are because of the roof project coming to an end. And our current general fund balance, $10,022,371. We do have roughly $1.3 million in encumbrances. So it brings our available cash balance to $8,670,651. Does anyone have any questions on the reports in your packet? Checks report or anything?
Hi, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's reports?
I do.
Just a second.
Second.
Brandon Moose, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent reports.
All right, I would like to recommend we approve a limited contract for Transportation Maintenance and Custodial Maintenance Supervisor to Jordan Lee to commence on 3/10/20 and end on 6/3/20. And then it'll, 6/30/20, and then it'll be a new contract to end July 1st.
Is there a motion? Brandon Moose, second?
Second.
Two seconds. Any discussion?
This is just a formality basically to getting through this year, to finish this title that he has, so.
Roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve classified position 2019, 2020, substitute custodian Fred Snook.
Brandon Moose, second?
Second.
Two seconds. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
All right, I would like to recommend approve supplemental contracts for 2019, 2020, middle school girls soccer coach Jennifer Blosser, spring game manager Tim Lys, and for the following positions, which the board has offered the position of middle school boys and girls track coach and middle school boys baseball seventh grade coach. To those employees of the district who have been licensed and no such employee qualified for positions excepted them. Further, the positions were advertised as available to any individual with a license who is qualified to fill them. It is not employed by the board. Middle school boys track or marks on middle school girls track, mark marks on middle school boys baseball grad duster.
Is there a motion? Brandon Moose, second? Two seconds. Discussion?
I just have a general question, so never mind. No question.
That was easy.
Yeah.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to recommend approve supplemental contracts for 2021 school year high school varsity football coach Steve Dalton and those positions the board has offered the position of high school varsity volleyball coach and high school girls soccer coach. Those employees of the district, they have been licensed and no such employee qualified for those positions excepted them. Further, these positions were advertised as available to any individual with a license who is qualified to fill them and not employed by the board. Recommend the high school varsity coach, volleyball coach Elena Smith, high school girls soccer coach Bailey Harrow.
Is there a motion? Two moves. Is there a second? Brandon, seconds. Discussion?
I thought that Elena Smith wasn't employee of the district.
She is an employee. She is not licensed. She has a substitute license.
Does that count as an employee? I mean, well, I mean, that's a dumb question, I guess, but you don't have to have a license to be considered as an employee.
No.
And these always get offered to employees first?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically by.
By default or?
Yes, by law.
Is that the higher vice code?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion?
And, sorry, to my understanding, to each, like, all of these positions, can you clarify? Because I think you mentioned it to me, but I, these are just year by year. They all have to be approved every year?
That is correct. Once, once the season is over, they're basically considered to be unemployed or no longer employed in that position. Such is the case with just avoiding Steve Dalton as varsity volleyball coach.
Because there's no inherent guarantee?
No, there's nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to recommend approve volunteers for 2019, 2020 classroom being Mary Chambers, Tiffany Cooper, Rena Doe, Taylor Finn, Lynn Isles, Amy Craft, Ridge Lot, Josh Miller, Tabitha Shaw, baseball Jason, Justin Cassidy, Doug Bennett, Scott Appholder, Tom Sarr, FFA Julie Weimer and Jeff Sweeney.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Brandon, second? I'll say it. Discussion?
I just want, there's a question. Mr. Kern, I discussed it. Retroactive means more often than not, they did not have paperwork turned in to us at the last board meeting. So therefore, once we get everything turned in to us, we would approve them to begin that process of working with students, but not until then. So that's the reason you see some retroactive dates.
How are these grouped together? I mean, I know that, like, number five, these are all volunteers, but, you know, is there any, like, the girls track coach and the boys baseball coach are grouped together? How's that? I don't know. That's just a point of curiosity.
That was, well, if you look, that was a 2019, it's based on the calendar year, the school year. The girls softball and game manager for this spring, as are the two track coaches in the seventh grade baseball. So that's, they were hired and then for this current 1920 school year. And then the next group we hired was 1920.
Okay.
And then any teams who were going to be used during this school year, they would have to be approved for the volunteer again next year.
Yes, okay.
I'm sorry, that's.
No, that's why I was just, that was just my curiosity, so thank you.
So I think one thing maybe that you're trying to hit on is there's some retroactive improvements for stuff that is already in season. At the same board meeting, we're approving a varsity football coach next year. I guess my only observation is it seems to be a little bit, I know like finding coaches sometimes is a challenge, right? So I think as a board, we have to be cognizant of that. But I think I would like to see, if we can, get to a point where establishing a timeline. I think there was some information that was sent to all board members from a coach who had coached here prior, was concerned about, you know, confusion or miscommunication or a lack of understanding about timelines and when they would be considered for reapproval and that type of thing. Like to see us have a little bit more of a schedule if we can, whenever possible. Sticking to being able to, that coach, at the end of the season, gets their review pretty immediately, you know, I think. And they get some sort of indication, if not a definite indication, then we intend to, you know, pursue, you know, renew your contract or no, we're going to go ahead and put this out available and give those coaches as much leeway as possible. Because you can see here, I mean, we're retroactively approving track and baseball coaches and their seasons. You know, practices already technically started, they're already working with these kids, but, you know, we're way out in front with football. So I get it though. I mean, I get the challenge of it. I'm not, I'm not mitigating that because I know we have trouble finding coaches in all circumstances, but as much as possible, if we can strive to have some sort of calendar of a timeline here where.
If anything, if we can seek other employment opportunities, you know.
Mr. Evans and I have started that conversation with trying to, I'll be honest, I would love to see fall coaches posted in December and we could be acting in January and to keep this as far in advance as possible. Because one, it keeps it on the burner for our coaches to keep on their assistants and their volunteers to be working in advance to make sure that they're, have things in place. Because I don't like the idea of us having to run around trying to figure out whether so-and-so is truly all papers approved. Because again, Mr. Evans is not with every group every day. The one is Mrs. Pontus, who is the one who's collecting paperwork and taking track of it. So we have, we have started that process of trying to figure out, for lack of a better word, a way that we can get these things. I'd much rather be added an occasional one as opposed to a list, right, put that way. Because I, we can't do what we do without volunteers, but we need to have it in place much sooner, so. Point taken, understood.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
All right, I would like to recommend that we rescind the Title I tutor contract issued to Elena Smith at the January 13, 2020 board meeting. Agenda item number 1520, the legislature did not allow her to be a Title I tutor, so she took another position and did not sign her contract.
I do.
Is there a second? Brandon, seconds. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Approve the 2020 graduation list as presented pending completion of all graduation requirements between now and graduation Sunday.
Is there a motion?
Question?
Brandon Moose, two seconds. Discussion?
Take account of 107 in this class.
How many are, are there any opinions?
No, there may be a couple. There's some work to be done.
As always, right?
As always.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
And to your appointment, Sharp, they have been made well aware of their shortcut. I mean, seriously, they, they are working very hard. Some of those who know are working very hard. I'd like to recommend approve the 2019, 2000 calendar change with addition of a additional professional development day on Friday, February 1st, 2020.
May 1st.
I'm sorry, May 1st, 2020, and students will not be in session that day.
Is there a motion? Brandon Moose, second?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
We will have this on the website. It will be sent out in voice mail and it will send out in a group text. And it'll probably be in all our newsletters if we can get them.
Is there any reason why we're?
We discussed, remember the standard raise report cards, the assessments to match those standard raise report cards that the teachers felt they needed some additional time to complete before next year.
And it actually works out good because it's the second day of the FFA convention and a lot of the students probably wouldn't be here. Well, I don't know. A lot of high schools do tonight. The FFA convention, it's the second day and a lot of, we got a lot of kids that go up to it, like from high school, so they wouldn't have been here that day anyways. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the 2020, 2021 calendar.
Is there a motion?
Mark.
Brandon Moose, second? Brandon, second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yeah.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve 2021, 2022 calendar. No, 2121.
We did 2021, this is 2122. Second. Is there a motion? I'll say it. Just a second. Discussion?
That was my wishful thinking, sorry.
Roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the job description of a full-time curriculum supervisor as presented. Motion.
Brandon, second? Two seconds. Discussion? Are you doing our work sessions?
Nothing changed. No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Nothing changed.
So this is our part-time going to a full-time and that we'll hire them from ourselves, not through E.S.C.?
Yes, and I'll be honest with you, Mrs. Song, Mr. Kern, in regards to the, I didn't realize we never, since we've never hired that person here as a sole position curriculum supervisor, we never had an approved job description per se. So we have the halftime with injunction with whatever position she helped with, so.
All right, so this one is approving the description, so is there a motion that we're doing?
Yeah, we're on the, sorry, roll call.
That's right, roll call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Winear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the creation of a full-time curriculum supervisor's position.
Second?
Second.
Brandon, seconds. Discussion? This one actually is approving the position, so yes.
The only, the only discussion I have, and this kind of goes for all of these, is that the numbers that we used in our planning meeting are going to be off just based on we're going to approve these positions before we go into any kind of negotiations. So just as long as everybody's kind of tracking that, that like the numbers are going to be a little bit different from what was originally discussed.
You want to pass these out? They're right now, pass these out?
Sure.
Okay.
This is, you mentioned, Mr. Winear, this is, Mrs. Bracken went back and put the new numbers in, took the positions up and talked about them. So these are new.
Revised.
New and proven, so.
Yeah, this is the update from our three-five meeting. So you'll see that we had taken out the six-twelve counselor on there and put the savings in for Mrs. Davis's guidance position. That was $67,417. So that savings is in your general fund savings of $282,590. Yes, you are correct that what we're looking at is the 1920 numbers. So we had apples to apples, especially with our curriculum director. However, when we do go into negotiations, whatever that percentage is then, will be added to any of the salary schedules. So I did kind of look in our five-year forecast, we have the 2% in there. So 2%, I had figured on the general fund numbers on the bottom of the 265, 665, 2% increase would be an additional $5,300 for that year. And salaries through our 467 funds, just the salaries, not any purchase services that we may have. Like the SRO would be the purchase service, 2% on that one would be an additional $7,100. So I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what that would build up.
Do we know too, like, if we had just contracted 10 to E.S.C. next year, if that number would have changed?
It would have. They actually, do you remember what their percentage was? It was higher than a 2%.
Yes, it was. I think it was closer to 3%.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I still think this K-5 social worker, we're still showing that. That should be a supplant as well because we're replacing a position, not adding.
But we took the guidance savings out to your bottom, right?
On the bottom. The 282 includes that $67,000 of savings for that. Yes, I see where you're saying it's not really a new position and supplanting that position.
Right.
But in reality. But in reality, was us having a new, it is a title change, so that's why I have it as a new. I can put new slash supplanting. Yeah, I think I need to, because it's not truly a new position, we're not creating a position, we're replacing a position with a different job title, okay?
All right, it's not a new.
Do what?
F T E.
F T E.
Right, that is correct. So, that seventy-one thousand eight ninety-seven is still there, because we'll have it for next year, but then I put that savings down at the bottom out of that general fund. Right. Okay?
Additional?
I'll just point out that this was a, um, put in the strategic plan to have a full-time curriculum director, I think that's probably the main motivating driver for my support, is that this has been discussed by not only the board, but the entire stakeholder group that was a part of that, uh, strategic planning committee, so, it's a recommendation that came out of that, so that's important to remember.
And several of these next positions come from the strategic plan, it's, I mean, just we would have to reiterate that five times, it, it, most of these positions come from that group decision, thank you for bringing that up.
Additional? Rule call.
Mrs. Psalm? Yes. Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to recommend we approve the job description of the K twelve literacy mentor.
Second? I'll say it. Discussion?
And the difference between, in the, if we looked at the strategic plan, when we started down this path, we were calling coaches, and this were taking coaches and replacing with a mentor, so.
So, I got a couple things. So, I, let me first state that I am very much in favor of the concept of creating, uh, resources for our teachers that involve coaching or mentoring, um, however, I do have some concerns about how this particular proposal's been presented to the board, um, one, I think, first and foremost, I don't know that we've had all the options presented to us that potentially exist, so, we're starting right off with, you know, a presentation of hiring two new full-time permanent staff positions, I think there are other constructs, um, of which we can go about providing this as a tool to our teaching staff, um, without creating two new full-time permanent positions. I also think that it, to, you know, to the point maybe that Mr. Renier was making a little bit earlier, I, I do think this needs to be presented as a part of a comprehensive, um, budget consideration by this board, I don't think that we should create new staff, uh, positions that are gonna be paid for out of the general fund, um, outside of that overall budgeting process, and certainly to the point that Mr. Renier made earlier, I do have concerns about, um, this, you know, if we're gonna create positions like this, certainly should be done with consideration of, of collective bargaining negotiation, I'm just, I'm, I'm very concerned that right now, we're gonna create two new positions, which takes, which we're gonna absorb resources out of the general fund, and we're already gonna limit ourselves on those resources we have available to be able to do our contract negotiation, and to consider pay adjustments for our existing staff, and I don't think we should do that, I think that's putting the cart before the horse. I think, I mean, those three points in particular are my main concerns, um, I would like to, to see the board take a little bit more time to consider different constructs, you know, is there, are there consulting, uh, services that are available to us, is there, training, what we can use existing staff to be, to become these coaches or mentors, um, and provide, you know, can we get this accomplished with supplemental contracts that way, uh, through, you know, purchase service combination with supplemental contracts for some of our existing staff, I think that just gives us at least more options, uh, when we consider some of these other things with, with the budgetary situation, um, the other thing I'm concerned about, you know, I'll just point out, is that we are, you know, I think we're doing a great thing by moving some of these teaching positions, uh, using this, using the state fund, the state wellness funds, um, which are not general revenue funds, to be able to pay for some of these other teaching positions, that's great, um, but I think there's at least now with those seven teaching positions, that in terms of the five-year forecast, you have seven teaching positions, if we include the Title I teaching position that we have at the elementary school, the class reduction, Title I position, uh, we have these seven teaching positions that are not gonna show up in the five-year forecast in terms of expenditures, unless we do so from a budgeting standpoint to set aside some of those dollars, um, if you plug those seven positions in, in the out year, you know, if this, if these wellness funds that we're gonna use to pay for these other positions, of course, that doesn't have anything to do with these two mentor positions, but I'm trying to take a comprehensive look at the budget situation, you plug those seven positions, if those, you know, dedicated purpose funds dry up, we enter recession, the first thing that's gonna go from, from the state, from the federal government, are gonna be some of those dedicated purpose funds, um, you know, take those as a, a group and plug them into our five-year forecast, we're already projecting, still deficit spending even with our new levy in the out years on our five-year forecast, that, I think, I'm, I'm concerned, and I haven't seen those numbers, to see what it would do if we have to move all these teaching positions back into the general fund, um, so, I would like to see us take a little bit more time, like I said, I'm very, very supportive of the concept of being able to provide this for our teachers as a resource, but I think we have to do it the right way, and I, I'm just not sure we've considered all the potential traps here going down this road, you know, and I'm also quite, and I'm also concerned, I think we need to do a better job of understanding the, the, the numbers, because as a board member who was told I needed to go out to the committee and make the case that we had to pass this income tax levy just to keep from slashing everything down to essential services, and now, all of a sudden, before we've collected the first penny of revenue from that new levy source, we're gonna create two new positions that are paid for out of the general revenue fund, I, I just, I don't feel like I have a firm enough grasp that we have the numbers to be able to support that in the long run, and I think we need to have a more sustainable path forward, so, for my part, I would like to see more options presented to us about how we can drive these resources without creating two full-time positions, right off the bat, maybe we go through it, and we figure out that's really the only way to do it, but I happen to know, just a little bit of research I've done, there are other constructs to be able to provide these resources, um, without hiring permanent full-time staff.
I have a couple questions, um, thank you, Mr. Kern, I, um, I'm very much in support of these mentor positions, I feel like they'll bring a lot of value added, but I do wonder, one, what's the sense of urgency in getting these, um, the creation of them approved right now, as opposed to taking a little more time, do we, like, because I feel like a lot of the policies that we have, and a policy, keep in mind, is something that we could decide down the road, just six months later, you know what, this isn't working out, we don't like it, we're gonna change it, rescind it, whatever, and all it takes is a vote, um, and that might impact some lives, but nobody loses a job over it or anything, this is something that, the first time we heard anything about it was Thursday, and we're voting on it Monday, and it seems a little bit odd to me that we would, um, you know, on policy, which I don't wanna say isn't a big deal, but there's no dollars typically involved, and there's, you know, no jobs necessarily on the line, we read that two or three times, but creating a new position, we're gonna talk about it once, and then, three, four days later, vote on it. What's the sense of urgency, is it due to needing enough lead time to put a J O A out there, get prospective applicants interview, or is it, I mean, 'cause similarly, I mean, I'm, I'm of the same mindset, I really am in favor of these positions, but it does look like if I were John Q Public, looking from the outside in, I would also be saying, okay, um, none of that new money has rolled in, but you're hiring, and not only that, we're hiring somebody, and then that person, that position, won't even be filled, won't even be identified, but they're gonna, they're gonna get a raise almost immediately, um, and that, you know, I'm not even saying that they don't deserve that, or the position shouldn't have that, but there's just a lot of things that I have questions about there.
Well, the urgency has come to the fact that we would obviously try, try to get advertised as soon as possible and get someone hired. Two, the urgency becomes from the fact that we've been unable to schedule a time before net last Thursday night, or a week ago Tuesday night, to have a meeting, um, and we talk about new monies, while there's no new levy money, supplanting is truly supplanting, I mean, we've had six hundred thousand dollars of wellness money that was presented to us in July, and I think we chose not to spend it because of the levy of creating positions or adding positions right before levy, so, I, I guess, that would be the answer to the urgency.
And as far as the monies also, um, we had to have some kind of plan to be able to put those numbers with it, and when we do the five-year forecast, you're going to see these things go through there, yes, we are supplanting, um, and we're saving in over two hundred eighty-two thousand on our general fund, so we have to be very cognizant of, yes, the general fund money hasn't started coming in from the, from the levy, however, like Mr. Dick said, we've got six hundred thousand dollars that we needed to spend in that timeframe, that's not in the general fund, federal funds, you are correct, also kind of do that supplanting also, um, however, we've been able to move things around in there, so this is the first year, actually, in our five-year, not our five-year forecast, but our federal funds for the, uh, reducing class size, the five ninety fund that you were talking about, that we've had a teacher in there the past couple of years, it's been for professional development, we've had additional monies, so we've been taking that out of our general fund, so, we supplant every year in some kind or fashion, um, by doing that, but, as far as going through, one of the things, too, that we've been looking at is, uh, that, uh, the cash reserve and the cash ceiling, so, Mr. Dick and I are very cognizant of that forty-five percent also that we're going into, so we can't keep not planning and, and spending money that, yes, we're going to be getting in, but to be able to spend these four sixty-seven funds, we have to be able to do it this way, if that makes sense, I, I understand where, where you're coming from, um, and that's one of the things that Mr. Dick and I during the strategic plan, we've talked about all of these, we're planning on doing a, um, video of it to try to explain that to everyone, help out.
And let me just be clear, I'm not arguing against using our Title One dollars in an innovative way to fund this teaching position, I'm not arguing, I'm, we're not considering the, the teaching positions that are gonna be paid for with the well, with the state wellness fund, I'm not arguing using those resources in that way, but what I am saying is, for long-term budgeting purposes, those expenses, those teaching positions, do not show up in the five-year forecast as liabilities, when you combine those seven positions that we have that don't show up as liabilities with our five-year forecast, with two new staff positions, with now a full-time curriculum director, if we ever had to get there, if those funding sources, those dedicated funding sources that we're paying for those other seven positions go away, or get significantly reduced, you're talking about a significant increase in our liabilities, from a staffing standpoint, and I think it really is a dangerous thing if we don't have a plan to, to do that, and when we're talking about adding two positions that are not teaching positions here, I just, I think the prudent thing here is to investigate every opportunity that we have, every construct that we have, to be able to provide these as a resource to our teaching staff, and it shouldn't, the default should not automatically be going to creating two permanent full-time positions, I, I'm, I just, I think, I think we ought to execute a little more prudence with it.
I would say part of what we discussed, or what was discussed on Thursday in terms of the sense of urgency to an extent, is the sooner we get these approved and put out, the best, you know, the bigger pool and the better potential of the person we're gonna get, the longer we wait, which I understand, I mean, it's, I, I get the idea that you need to maybe take a little more time, be more prudent, but at the same time, the farther it gets shoved down the road, the more, if we finally do eventually decide to go with it, our pool's gonna be, well, who's left, instead of who might be the best, if we get it put out now, instead of two months, three months, four months from now, um, so, I mean, I guess that's one of the things I would look at from a, I guess, a reason for the sense of urgency to, sense of urgency to an extent, and I also see the concern, you know, of what happens if these funds dry up, you know, gosh, then we gotta absorb that in the general fund, but a lot of these new, like this new position, the other mentor position there are not teaching positions, um, and you hate to hire somebody with the idea that we might have to get rid of them three years from now, if something doesn't work.
That's where I come from.
But at the same time, I.
I don't wanna be having to turn around and let somebody go just two or three years later, if, if we can find a way to account for it in the, in the five-year forecast, and out of the general fund, and, and make it all add up, I, at all costs, I'd like to avoid having to hire somebody and then turn around two, three years later and let them go.
I guess I'd kind of look at it from the standpoint of, I would rather, I guess, and then maybe it's just being the eternal optimist I tend to be, I would rather hire who, the positions that, based on conversation with our administrative team and so forth, and the strategic plan and so forth, and what we would need to help move this school forward, I would rather hire people on the optimistic side that it'll work out, and three years from now, hopefully that's, those funds will still be there, and we can keep going, and if they're not, then three years from now, we'll have a better idea anyways of what we're getting in, in terms of our new tax revenues and so forth, and if we have to go ahead and drop a couple of them back at that point, so be it, or if not, we'll have three years under our belt, where we will know, we can look back at data in terms of what kind of improvements are we seeing, you know, in terms of student performance and so forth, and, again, I guess I would rather err on the side of, let's try to do something to make things better, and if it doesn't, then we'll have to adjust in three years from now, versus, well, let's just not do anything.
And please know, if there's ever any time when you're seeing any numbers that you want additional numbers, or see it differently, please let me know, because on the back end, I'm not only just pulling these numbers for this spreadsheet, I'm plugging them into the five-year forecast, I'm making sure that we're going to be okay, because if we're not, Mr. Dick is the first person that I go and sit in front of him and say, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, um, I've said that a couple different times in my career, so, there's different things that we're looking at and talking behind the scenes, because we don't wanna bring anything to the board that is gonna, is going to, um, we don't want to bring any positions to the board that we know we're gonna have to cut in a couple of years, we've been working on minimal, uh, for a long time, and so to be able to get some things done and put it in that five-year forecast, we're looking at that, so you, you guys will be able to see that when we're looking at the five-year forecast, too, those will already be plugged, and you'll see that. So, right now, though, we have this really five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, and we know that we're gonna get the three hundred and fifty-three thousand for at least two more years, because of the biennial budget with the wellness, so we know we have three years left of this, we also know in that three years, we are going to have attrition, people are going to retire, they're going to move for whatever reason, so we, I think we can hire these positions and plan out, we see in two years, when I'm gonna get this wellness funding, this isn't working out, there'll be other places to ship those teachers through, probably without having to eliminate positions, just through attrition would be my guess. I'm sure that we average more than two or three people who leave every year. Obviously, there is there, that is correct.
And I would like to say, I would think that there are, instead, I, instead of using the three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar number, I would prefer we use a two forty-four, because I think he said that he would assure us the minimum what he's giving us, and, and in my world, I look at the two forty-four as the minimum he's given us at this point in one year, so.
That's my world, too.
What's that?
That's my world, too.
Yes, I mean, again.
It's frustrating, but it's that much of a swing, you know?
Yes.
Like, I mean, don't get me wrong, the last three fifty-three, that's a great number.
But it's, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars when you look at it, that, and, that would help us make sure that we're on the conservative side of, of expenditures.
I think there's one thing involved with all that, just based on the, the estimates for two thousand twenty-one with adding positions and shifting and supplanting and so forth, um, I guess the grand total to the general fund is an additional roughly fifteen thousand, but that's including the school, the, uh, the S R O position, which we haven't, which it would, ideally would be nice if we can work something out and figure that in, and, and ideally, something that, for less than what's estimated there, uh, but that is certainly one that we, as we discussed on Thursday, we can give a little more time to, and, and see where we can get with that, and if we can actually work out something, whether it be with the bill. And if we can actually work out something, whether it be with the village or the county or, or whatever, to where we can have some sort of presence with that and, and knock that down even at a, you know, not even a half, but a decent percent, then we're, at least for three years roughly, never know with numbers, pretty much a wash in terms of the general fund dollars. Like I said, three years from now, we can see where we're at. I would be more hesitant if, if, if we were suddenly adding all of this to the general fund and so forth. And, and we might in three years. But again, at that point, we can see just how effective these positions have been. And if we have to at that point, we can decide which ones, which positions are best to keep, whether it's these or different ones or whatever in terms of what seems to be most effective.
Jill, what's the, when do we start deficit spending right now in the five-year forecast with the income tax levy?
With the income tax levy? Um, I don't believe we're deficit spending through the first five, well, we are from the first beginning of it until we're getting the full. And then when we start going through, we'll come back out of that.
We'll deficit spend the next few years.
Yeah, because we won't get the full amount for the income tax levy.
Until the third year?
Now, I will also say, we also had not anticipated the, um, the, uh, pup money coming in for our, um, electric lines and things coming through on that one. And with the reappraisal of that bringing that down, there's additional funds coming through for that one too. So, it's, it's going to be a wash.
About two hundred thousand?
It's about two hundred thousand.
Oh, it's two hundred thousand. Evaluation?
Evaluation, yeah. Because it pulled down underneath, it pulled us down underneath of the floor. So, it had to be adjusted. Almost all the schools had to be adjusted for that. You're going to see that in that five-year forecast also. Those are things that we have looked at for this.
The board has, I haven't seen any of those numbers.
They were presented somewhere.
I mean, nothing shows up on the board packet in terms of the number of spreadsheets that show any of this stuff, though.
The tax budget showed those. The tax budget had those, um, amounts in there. And then the tax budget just got approved too, so those funds will go into that five-year forecast. That's one of the things with our five-year forecast. We have it in May and we have it in October. So, when any, there's any adjustments, we can make those. And I, I've made the board aware of those adjustments. It's just that you don't, I guess you don't put those in there to do that every single month. I mean, if we need to change up how we're doing things, um, we can look at that. But certainly, Mr. Dick and I are, are always looking at that. I'm updating the five-year forecast each month with our revenues and our expenditures and anything that we know that's coming through.
I apologize, I think I've been in one meeting, I can't remember, but I know Jill and I a month or so ago discussed that a lot. So, I guess I do, I had that two hundred thousand number in my head. I wasn't, I guess I don't know how much.
Probably the tax budget hearing.
Any additional discussion? All right, so we are back to the motion to approve the job description. That's one we're still on, right? The description for the K twelve literacy monitor, or mentor, sorry. Rule call.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No. Approve the creation of the K twelve literacy mentor position. I would like to recommend that.
Is there a motion? Move second. Round the seconds. Discussion then again, does it be the actual creation of it versus just the job description that should be just approved? Pretty much discussed already. Is there anybody, anything else? All right, rule call.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the creation of the K twelve instructional mentor.
Right, is there a motion? Round move second, two seconds. Again, this is the description of the position at this point in terms of approving just the job description. Rule call.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the creation of a K twelve instructional mentor position.
Motion? Round. Round the seconds. Discussion. Rule call.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the creation of a K five social emotional teacher.
Is there a motion? Round move second, round just a second. Discussion. Rule call.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend we approve the job description of a K five social worker, K five classroom social worker.
Round move second. Six seconds, discussion.
And this is what's going to replace the K five guidance capsule, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That is right.
What else? Rule call.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to approve the creation of a K five social worker position.
Is there a motion? Round move second, two seconds, discussion. Rule call.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Rinear?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'd like to make sure we notice that there's not a K five social emotional teacher job description. And that is, uh, the job description is that of a classroom teacher because they teach standards just like all classroom teachers teach standards. Legislative liaison report, Mr. Kern.
Uh, the legislature is on recess and will be so put that way for the next three weeks. Um, in terms of education policy, there's been no movement on the voucher bill debate. Speaker and the Senate President are both dug in pretty, pretty deep with their heels here, so there's been real no movement. Um, we'll approach that new deadline, then move back to April first. Senate President, for his part, said he does not intend to do any other approved, and he doesn't see his chamber approving any other extension of that deadline. Um, so it'll be interesting to see where that negotiation comes out. Again, remember the default is if there's no action by the legislature, see the expansion of the voucher eligibility, uh, based on performance, partial, which would be the voucher eligible to K two building, correct? So, um, State Board met today to finalize the OTEZ, uh, plan. I did not see what the outcome of that was yet. I don't know if you got an update from any of your- I have not. Um, that's supposed to be on the agenda today for, for the superintendent to present that to the board. So, um, if I get something tomorrow, so right after that, I'll send it out to the board. But no, not a whole lot going on right now other than on, on break.
I smiled because of the expensiveness of the new OTEZ.
It's been, you know, two years in the making, so.
Yep. All right, curriculum council report, Mr. Rinear or Mrs. Saum?
I'll let Ralph take it, but I, um-
Sure.
Just for future, um, because we now have a student achievement liaison position. Can we add that to the agenda of the boards? And with that said, I don't have anything to say right now. We have that video, which I think is probably a little late to, to play it now. Um, but I will make sure that if we can get that on the agenda for the next meeting and I will have-
Yes.
Uh, something for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, curriculum council was busy, very busy. The first we talked about, um, graduation seals. And the debate was, we have somewhere between seven and eleven graduation seals. Um, we're working with the other county schools to have some that are the same as the other county schools. Some will not be, but some will be. And just so everybody knows, seals are one of the pathways to graduation. Um, Mr. Hinton wasn't here, so Mr. Dick gave that. We talked about standard-based report cards, which we're going back to hopefully in the K five. They completed a rough draft, the review standards to make sure they're included in how they'll be assessed. And discussing how would they show the assessment level. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of samples passed out and it's a work in progress, it's progressing. Um, Mrs. Morgan, one of our, uh, three, five teachers, she's third grade, fourth grade?
Fourth.
Fourth grade. Um, was talking, a parent had approached her about ability groups and how our students are grouped in the K through five. In the K two, they're currently ability grouping. But actually, Mrs. Marshall said that next year they may try to be a little more diverse in those groups because, um, there's a lot of research that says that peer really help kids. So, but in the three, five, they are not ability-based, they are, uh, pretty good mixture, except in, is it the fifth grade? The superior cognitive kids.
Yeah, separate math.
Okay. Um, and then the depth of knowledge assessment, Mr. Dick says they're trying to get the depth of knowledge to match the standard-based scorecards. That doesn't sound like much, but it really would take an hour. It was a busy hour. And we meet again next month. We're meeting every other month, but we gave up February because of something else going on.
Conference conferences, we-
That's right.
Cafeteria meeting instead of-
That's right. Did I miss anything?
No, nothing's good. Nice. Very good. That's why I let you do it.
Building press report, Mrs. Marshall.
All right. We just then finished up our Read Across America Week. Um, it was nursery rhymes for the primary school all last week. Um, we want to thank all of the students that came over and were guest readers at our school. Um, you know, it was awesome that they could walk up and just come in, read a book to different classes. Um, Mr. Dalton always reaches out, um, every year. But this year, we also had some FFA members that were up there. Um, and we had lots and lots of parents, um, that came in and read. Um, some classrooms, there were one to two parents a day that came in and guest read. And a lot of them make it mystery readers, so they give clues. Um, but it was a really successful week. We ended it, um, at the end of the week with all of the grade levels, um, pre-K through two vertically aligning and getting together and doing nursery rhymes and readers theaters together. Um, so it was a really cool week. Um, coming up next week is our PD Day and the primary is going to be traveling to Pickerington to receive training on that day, um, on foundations, which we will be implementing next year. Um, our end of the quarter, believe it or not, is Friday. Um, starting the eighteenth of March will be our gifted testing. So, a couple of days a week, we start that and we should be done by the end of March. Um, and Caitlin Wood from ESC has been coordinating with us. And we'll actually come this Friday and work with our second grade teachers, um, and go over the testing material. Um, we also have our savers club coming up and it's been very successful so far. Um, it is on March twenty-fifth and we still are allowing parents to sign up if they would like. And then the last week of March, the thirtieth through April, April third, um, is our pennies for patients. Um, so we'll be collecting money and our school nurse runs it and we'll have an assembly with the kids and get them all hyped up and pumped up. And they end up earning like Kona ice at the end of it, so, um, it's a lot of fun. And then one of our biggest days is March twenty-seventh. It was grandparents' day. We typically have, um, around four hundred grandparents that come and eat lunch with their grandkids on that day. So, we're super excited to continue that tradition this year. And then believe it or not, April seventh and eighth is our kindergarten registration. We will be pushing that date out to our parents, um, by the end of this week. Um, so Mrs. Kraft was getting trained on, on final forms. So, after she gets trained, we'll be ready to go and get, get to start getting a list of all the, um, kindergarteners that will be coming in. And then April second, we have the zoo coming to both the primary and elementary. Come for a zoo day. And April third is the PTO spring carnival. So, lots of good things coming up. That was a lot, I know.
Mrs. Young, I see several hot dogs in her future.
I know, she's getting ready.
Because you eat one of them, you know? Mrs. Wilson?
At the elementary, I would just like to take the time to thank the teachers that came to our curriculum council meeting. There, there was, um, it was nice to see our teachers be a part of that process. They have worked hard with the revision of their pacing guide to align it to their quarterly standards that they're responsible for teaching. And then on top of that, to continue their DOK knowledge into this school year from the training they did last year in the creation of our end of the quarter assessments that our RIBLs have been creating so that they're common assessments, so that every teacher is given the same test, the students are being analyzed on the same data, they can analyze together as a team. And then that in turn has pushed us into the revised progress report. So, the three, five teachers have worked extremely hard on these all school year. I just am very proud of their continued dedication to our learning community. They, they don't leave one second unturned in their day, so I appreciate that. Moving forward, I would like to thank our PTO for hosting a fantastic family dance night. It was the family fiesta this past Saturday. It was a very long family fiesta. Um, but I know that the family and the students had a great time, so that was, um, just much appreciated on the early.
Can I interrupt you? I'm really sorry. Um, I heard a lot of positive feedback about, um, not having it be just a-
Father, daughter, mother, son.
Yeah, but so, um, I think-
I'll let them know.
Yeah, I think that was a great idea and if you could pass that along, that-
We will.
That seemed to be a hit.
We definitely will pass that along. We are getting very, um, kind of focused at the elementary, starting in April. We have all of our air testing for third, fourth, and fifth grade that begins. So, on April sixth, we are having a testing pep rally for our, for all of our three, five students. The varsity cheerleaders are going to be kind of leading that. I've created cheer and chants for them. They're just going to put fancy flips and moves to it so that we can get the students excited. The staff has created a testing theme, so we are officially prepared for our spring testing, so it's an ocean theme. And we will be doing lots of fun, different activities on non-testing days, theme days where the students dress up. Um, so they're excited about that. We also last week had our K five math and science night. That was a huge success. I was extremely proud of all of the teachers that put in the hard work to those math and science nights. I know every grade level had a project that they got to do and it was just so cool to see the students go up on the stage, to be a part of those projects when the hour or the half-hour bell kind of rang and then they got to go up. So, our final, um, event, our grand finale was even, it took a little longer and there were some, you know, learning processes there for, um, for Mike, but it was a great success too. The students still enjoyed it. Overall, I was very proud of that many. The March PD Day is coming up on March seventeenth. The teachers have been given the opportunity, we listened to what their feedback was as a district leadership team. So, we gave them the opportunity to design their own PD instead of administration saying, this is what our PD is going to be. We've given them that opportunity to say, where in your teaching career or where in your day-to-day do you feel like you need to improve? And so, they have been filling out Google forms. Tomorrow, the DOT has the privilege of going through those Google forms now and approving those PDs. So, we're excited to see all of that unfold and what the teachers have been creating. We gave them the option of actually going out into other classrooms in the county and actually in the state of Ohio. We have a teacher who's going down to, um, see a very cool classroom that she's excited to see. So, just for them to be able to say, this is what I really think I want to see. And for us to be able to say, yes, we don't have to pay a sub, we are giving you this day to be able to go and do that, is exciting for them. And the last thing on mine is, we did not participate in the Read Across America last week. We are participating in the Right to Read Week in May, so we're excited to see that come out. We just felt like we had so much, we were just too focused on preparing for that assessment. And to lose that, that academic time right now, we weren't ready to give it up, so we're going to push it to May.
Thank you. Mrs. Cocker?
All right, I'm going to keep mine short and sweet.
Yeah, Mr. Hinton would have been like texting your alarm. I was like, he's not here tonight. I enjoyed that.
We're recording, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's written. We miss you.
Okay, so in the middle school, um, back on February twenty-first, eighth grade students, um, had the opportunity to attend the Fairfield County, Fairfield Career Center visit and this was an opportunity for them because they didn't select the areas that they wanted to attend. They actually got to see all the different areas that they could eventually, um, be a part of as a high school student. And that kind of feedbacks off what Kyle and Erin talked about earlier with thirty-five sophomores being accepted in the first round. That's, that's huge, um, you know, with a smaller student body here, I mean, compared to other county schools, not we're sending that many kids out. So, they did get that experience on the twenty-first. Um, Mr. Hinton, Mrs. Allen, um, Mrs. McFarland and myself have been working on the master schedule, um, at least six through twelve. And I'm excited that I think next year- And I'm excited that I think next year, our eighth grade students will have the opportunity to be part of the rotation electives and that gives them an opportunity to dabble in the four different pathways that we're offering at the high school. So they'll have that opportunity before they choose, essentially choose a pathway as a high school student. And then in February, sixth and seventh grade students took the algebra progress test if they had parent permission with return. And several of those students will have the opportunity to take algebra next year either as two years grade advanced or one year grade advanced. So those letters will be going home to middle school parents here in the upcoming weeks. As Mrs. Wills said, I'm looking forward tomorrow to reviewing the PD sessions on the middle school teachers. I know there's been a lot of excitement being able to choose their own PD and build off essentially what some of the strengths or weaknesses are as a teacher, so I'm looking forward to that. We are officially twenty days away from testing, so we're, you know, doing some prep here at the end. Some final rallies in the classroom to get our students prepared for middle school testing. And then finally, last Friday was our Fun Friday incentive. Several students had the opportunity to get out of system some period and go down. Mr. Ross pitch was our DJ and they played Just Dance on the big screen in the cafeteria and that was quite a scene.
Thank you.
Thank you all. New business. Item one, approved summer school for middle school students from June nine through June twelve. Elementary reading ELA summer school from June ten through June twenty-four. Middle school will report from nine AM to noon. The teacher will report from eight-thirty AM through twelve-thirty PM. Elementary school from nine AM until noon. Staffing for summer school will be dependent on the number of students participating in summer school. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Oh, moves. Second?
I'll second.
Justin Seggs, discussion?
This pretty much, I'm sorry.
Second, go ahead.
This pretty much mirrors what we've done in the past. We're gonna do things this time next year would look different, but this is how we've done summer school in the past.
And the summer school dates are going to be after we get the air test results from the, is that correct?
Yes, that's right, I think everyone.
So the students who may.
I think we're supposed to get the test on the eighth.
The test dates actually come on June fifth, which is a Friday.
Yes.
So we'll have the information then, so we'll know if there are students who do not have. Okay, perfect.
I was curious if we have a rough idea of how many, like based on past.
Uh, we probably know more than twenty show up, so.
And this is a requirement or?
In order to encourage, yes.
Gotcha.
That's what I said, next year we'll have a more like it, so.
Did I say like it?
Uh, we don't have a kindergarten yet.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Item two, approve resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Fairfield County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. And there are, uh, I can read it, but so can you? So there are whereas and whereas and there's the two resolves resolves, but it's all pretty much standard, so, so. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
So what is this?
I'll give you a second.
Oh, I thought you said. Oh, I thought you said.
No, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was asking for a second.
Sorry. Like you said, I'll second. I understand.
Okay, so this comes from our tax budget hearing that we had in January that you guys approved on that. Mr. Dick and I had to go to the budget commission and explain that tax budget with them, have them review it. They were okay with that and took what our evaluations and ratings were on there for our levy. So this is just them sending it back so we're certifying this and you guys have to do that. Send it back in tomorrow.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Saum? Yes. Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Item three, approved renewal of our membership through the Ohio School Comp Program with Comp Management for our workers' compensation and unemployment compensation claims management services. This annual premium is one thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, which is an increase of twenty dollars from last year to this attachment eight in the packet. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Brandon Seggs? Discussion?
Uh, this is an annual membership, Comp Management lets us go in with the group rating and so we actually got a better rating group wise. I also checked with another vendor for this and that Comp Management actually came in about thirteen hundred dollars cheaper. So we have been using them for multiple years. It was good to see that they were still cheaper than the other vendors, so we've been happy with them. They've been great to work with, so.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Establish time and date to meet with the five-year forecast.
I thought that was five-year forecast slash finance meeting, but we weren't going to do those separate this time.
We will, that is correct. This will be setting the time for you guys and then the finance committee will be invited in for their meeting.
So this really is the five-year forecast slash finance meeting that we're setting the date for?
Yes.
Okay. And when do we need that?
We have to have the five-year forecast approved at the May board meeting, so we would want to do it sometime in April.
Do we need to do it before the April meeting? That would probably be good. I'm free tomorrow night. I'm not. I'm joking. I'm joking about tomorrow night, but.
Concert.
It's true, actually.
We are free tomorrow night.
No, um, yeah, that was, that was some levity, but I would, I would think before the April meeting would be good too.
You want me to send a doodle poll out?
Please.
Okay. I'll do that.
All right. We're gonna do a poll, we don't, we don't have to go down there. Item five, approve amended appropriations for fiscal year 2020, attachment nine into packet. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
House, this time?
Uh, these amended appropriate discussions, sorry.
Sorry, you just kind of, you're good.
Okay, so these amended appropriations, we received a pine grove post grant. So that appropriation was upped by approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars for that grant. Along with, we had two field trips coming through two of our activities, student activities groups. So foreign language was one of them and our choir was the other. So we wanted to just change up those appropriations too. So other than that, that's in those appropriations, that's all that is upped.
Any discussion? Additional discussion, I should say. Roll call?
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Item six, establish a time and date to meet with the audit committee consisting of Mr. Dick, Mrs. Bradford, myself and Mrs. Young. Set one or even go to doodle poll out two, I suppose.
Mrs. Young, what is, and because evenings better for you on those holidays, I guess that early?
Yes, yeah.
What's earliest you could be here? Okay.
Okay. We did receive a clean audit. We do have a management recommendations, so that's what we'll be going over along with internal audits for our, our student activity at test.
You want me to send a poll?
You want, you can just do a doodle poll.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I can check my works. Okay. So when are you anticipating, like within?
Probably next two weeks. I'll extend it, I'll be on that just in case something doesn't work for all of us, but I will. It'll be sent out tomorrow. I can't.
Okay.
All right, item seven, approve a twenty-dollar stipend for BLT members per meeting attended effective for the nineteen-twenty school year for those attendees who are not a team leader or department head. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a move? Second?
I'll second.
Second, discussion?
Each building has a building leadership team meetings and as part of requirement for a team leader and department head, they are to be part of that BLT makeup. However, there are other members who are not a team leader or department head and we have to pass pay for it office per meeting for them to accept. That's what this is doing.
Additional discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Item eight, approve the following equipment for disposal, a purple slicer model blah 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 and a Hobart slicer model blah blah blah. Exactly. Is there a motion? So is there a second?
Second.
Brandon Seggs, discussion?
These slicers came with the building and they probably have them cut five tons of meat in seventeen here, so. They're large and probably need to remove from the areas.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Item nine, approve the Student Wellness and Success Funds Implementation Plan Agreement. Item ten, in your packets. Is there a motion? Is there a move, second?
Second.
Second, discussion?
Um, part of the, the ability to get your six hundred thousand dollar, whatever it was we were approved and perceived, we had to have an agreement to work with an outside agency chosen the ESC. Once I was assured that the ESC was not going to have any service charges or act that to it. So once we approve tonight, she and I will sign off on it tomorrow and it'll be in place then.
There was a correction somewhere.
The resource officer?
Yeah.
It says it is agreed by between the parties to the agreement that as follows and then number of letter C's says it will employ a resource officer, which we decided to.
That should be May.
Yeah, okay, it should be, all of them should be read as May. I will make sure of that.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Cause it should not, I mean, what happens, it limits us to what we can and if you make it broad enough, that's one of the things we can. So I will make sure that's correct.
How long is the agreement for? Is it just one year?
As far as I know, it stays in place until the wellness, the success and wellness money goes away.
And can you add to this agreement and like say we decide we want to add something?
Such as, cause it.
I don't know.
One of these, I think it's set up so those are broad enough, we can add anything that would have to do with success and wellness under any one of those categories. So we would not have to be specific in order to add it.
But all these wills should be May?
May, yes. Yes, it should be May's.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion on that? Roll call?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Item ten, approve purchase to replace and upgrade our access points from CSC. A is quote three, five, zero, zero, four for a total of fifty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-five. Will replace access points in grades K through eight with an E-rate reimbursement of twenty thousand six sixty-three forty-one after installation, which is item eleven, attachment eleven in your packet. And then B, quote thirty-five, one, seven, six for a total of twenty-five thousand one eighty-eight oh five. Will replace the access points in the high school. We do not have E-rate fund available for the high school for 2020, that is attachment twelve. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Problem move, second? Second. Discussion?
Uh, these are just, what is it, updates. If you look at above the one, above Mr. Kern's shoulder, that's an access point that would be replaced. It is aged out basically, so. The reimbursement is, not Mr. Kern is that aged out, the access point. The E-rate, Mrs. Bradford?
It's almost twenty-one thousand dollars and, and this amount would come out of our component replacement that we're transferring over to the permanent improvement.
Since the license lasts for five years, does it show up on this fiscal year or does it get spread out across five fiscal?
It'll be an up, the quote will include it for that fiscal year and then it'll go through for the next five years. So it's kind of how it was done in the first place also.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So this is an annual contract?
I don't.
No.
No, it's a five year, so once it's paid, it's good for the five years.
For the license, the cloud license.
Yeah, for that license. I believe our, our prior one that is medium renewed is the five year also.
Cause that one's up very soon if I recall.
I think it's November, yeah.
Yeah, it might have even been sooner than that, but it was very soon.
You guys talked about that, though.
Yeah, I seem to think it was September.
It's the wireless internet.
Right.
So are we requiring both?
Yes, we want to do both in order.
Okay, so but it's not an either or.
No. It's like I'm both.
Additional discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Item eleven, approve policy JGD student suspension, which is attachment thirteen in our agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Move, second?
I'll second.
Second, discussion?
This is one we tried to come up with some kind of idea, we could do something with in-school students, in-school restriction preventing them from participating in extracurricular or youth activities. And what we come to find out is basically we can't, we don't have any jurisdiction over those particular groups to prevent them from being a part of that. What we did was just presented the policy as we start with, with the corrections about not suspending, not, not suspending K three kids.
Unless they, sorry.
Yes. And that's just a weapon issue running out.
Or they physically hurt somebody the way that the law is written? Is that part of this?
Yes. Uh, let me see.
So that's in law, but I don't see it in, in here, which I mean, I think just as a point of clarity for parents and the public alike, it might be good to have that in here. Hopefully it never comes into play, it never comes as an issue, but if there are exceptions to the policy or to the, to the law, I should say, then maybe that'd be good to be in here.
Maybe we should bring it back. I thought it was in that, I also, I did not see, maybe it got lost in the translation from what was kept and what was not, so.
I'll move table.
Okay.
I'll second.
Table this, hold in the favor. Or Steve's guard, sorry, roll call, I'm back to the baby.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mrs. Saum?
Yes.
Mr. Renear?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that.
So we'll be adding something about physical harm.
Yes, and weaponry piece.
State. All right, item twelve, although I guess beforehand, well, maybe we'll, we'll consider it all part of the same discussion, I guess. Item twelve, approve out-of-state trip, national honor site, requesting to travel to Gatlinburg, Pigeon Forest, Tennessee from June one to June three. They provide the prerequisite three travel quotes for approval at the April meeting. Problem move, second? I'll second. Discussion item though is, and we wanted to bump up the discussion that you wanted to do in terms of the whole, I guess coronavirus concern in terms of sending students out of state.
Yeah.
It's kind of one of those things where you never know. It's kind of one of those things where you never know, it's just a challenge.
I don't see a problem with it. I mean, if anything, shame on the media for doing a health scare. If you pull the fire alarm, this isn't any different. By the time June rolls around, flu season's going to be over. If you look statistically, no more people are dying of coronavirus than dying of flu every year. More people are dying of the flu than the coronavirus. I think that's apparent choice. I didn't realize that was going to be part of this discussion on whether or not they were going to get to go. This is the first I've heard it from what you just said, but I think it is unfair and not right for us to take a public scare and not let our students or anybody travel because there's no data to support that. If as a parent you don't want to send your child because you're afraid of it, then that's fine, you can make that choice as a parent for your student. Because if we're going to do that, then we need to cancel every trip that goes outside of this school building. There's no difference between Pigeon Forge and Tate Valley.
I just wanted the discussion because plenty of businesses have announced, including the state, you know, the state government and they're saying, you know, travel and, or do we bump up the, you know, to justify the purpose of the travel? So if we got to a point here at the school where all of a sudden it was massive, um, where we, even if it's the flu and you have to shut down the school, then do we, then have we approved something that the kids are going to go to on June first and are we liable for it, you know? Did we just subject all these kids to a bus full of food?
Would that be a good question for a parent?
Well.
But we've already approved trips, are we going to say?
Oh, I am. I know.
I, I think it's important, I think it's important too, that there's still quite a bit of time here. So one thing to look at is, once we get quotes, a question to ask would be, what's a drop dead date for us to cancel? Because if we're talking three months from now, a lot can change in three months, better or worse, and we'll have a better idea as the time gets closer as to whether or not the risk has increased, remained the same, decreased. So, you know, if we find out and we get quotes, hey, cancellation date is seven days in advance, we can maybe revisit this at that time.
Yeah, I would tend to, I guess, kind of mirror what you said it too as well, as fast as, unfortunately, as fast as it's been going already, just in the last few days, once it got to here by June, I would also tend to think it's probably going to come and gone.
Because we'll have a trip in Washington DC before this one.
Right, and I knew we'd already approved that, so that's the reason, I mean, since you had it on the agenda for, if we're going to talk about it, let's talk about it in the context of everything that we do and I agree with you, parent discretion, absolutely.
I would tell you, um, for whatever reasons, the, the county superintendent's got a role in today about their plan of attack if they have to shut down school and, um, not that I'm, we have three claimant days left. So I mean, that's, that's part of our saving grace to a point. Um, we have, uh, we got some additional hours, we could go beyond those three claimant days and still not have to be in fear of making days up. Uh, however, um, you know, they're talking about creating lizard bags or instructional bags or, um, I, I am, I'm not a big fan of, but that doesn't mean we can't, because I do think we're going to have to, if this comes to be, we're going to do something.
Well, they would, they would have to always create a state of emergency for the, before, I mean, I'm not saying that that would ever happen, but I would think that if there was an outbreak and they would declare a state of emergency and then the rules change a little bit on calamity days and things like that, correct?
I would think, yes, I would like you, you know, if you have a lizard, things change.
Sure. Um, so today, the governor's press conference in terms of state employee travel, um, the governor and the director of the Department of Health said they're essentially looking at a two-week window out from right now and then that window just keeps sliding so they can continue to do reassessment. So I see no problem with us as a board as, you know, approving this travel right now and being able to reassess what the situation is as we get closer. Um, it's probably a good idea to have a contingency plan to have some sort of update, you know, from our, from our trip organizers about if they need to get reimbursements or cancellation without penalties and things like that for it. Um, it might, it might be a good idea to have a target date so that we can reassess if we need to. Probably also have that idea of like some sort of positive affirmation from parents that they are, you know, you know, signing off that they understand there could be a risk from travel out of state if, and, you know, something like that, I don't know, but.
Is the governor limiting tra- limiting travel for the next two month, weeks?
No, state employees, I will say it's, it's kind of conditional, so he, the way he explained it, he said, no state employees are going to conferences in the next two weeks. Um, there are state employees who, if you have to travel as an official part of your job duties, so BCI agents who are investigating the crime, they need to move evidence from a crime scene to the BCI lab, they're still going to be traveling around, but any non-essential travel's been canceled for the next two weeks.
Cozy state agencies the same way, state teachers, no international travel and because we have investors, that, that's required with their job, that's out. And, um, non-essential conferences.
I, I have tried to do a balancing act with, um, posting things on the web, I mean, uh, if I had a dime for everything that I received in the last three weeks, um, we can solve a lot of problems in the manificent school district. So I gotta be very cognizant of what, how much I do put out, I don't want to create a, uh, a panic state, but at the same time, I want to make sure everybody understands that we are not, not doing anything, um, which, just so you know, we, we've added, uh, four hours of additional custodial services every night to make sure we're trying to get the clean, additional cleaning. Um, we are, we have put hand sanitizers in all bathrooms, probably should have been at home before now, but they're there. Uh, so, yeah, we are trying to do those things that we can superficially do, um, and, but at the same time, not creating a sense of panic on behalf of the staff and students and hopefully we can operate business as usual until someone tells us differently. To your point, Mr. Renier, I do believe it will change things if they create a state of emergency. They'll dictate us what we can account to, where we should and should not be and when we should and should not be there.
They're not going to ding us for, for being at school when there's a public.
Because I think it's going to be everybody else too.
I also think, do we have like a standard, you know, because this, the COVID nineteen thing, this is one example of some, the potential for something like this to go wrong, where we might need to be for an extended period of time not in school. Do we have like a standard, uh, plan or?
In our safety plan, it talks about blood-borne pathogens and communicable diseases and I, this is a, as far as we know, it's a communicable disease which can lead to a pandemic issue, but, uh, I would tell you, it doesn't dictate when we leave school or when we're out of school, but it addresses a part of not trying to make sure we're doing proactive steps and I'll tell you, one of the first things we discussed on our district leadership team meeting tomorrow will be the coronavirus issue and how we want to, um, move forward with it and, and, uh, because I, I could just, I just felt, uh, over the room, we mentioned lizard bags, because I mean, there's, I, all due respect, nothing against our teachers, they have no value regards to what we send home, what we get back and what we do with it once we bring it back. You know, one of the things that Meta, I will pass it out, Meta today sent out paperwork about us, making sure we have our online classes in place so that we can send them home during, uh, a break, outbreak and I, I just want to invite them down to GoAllManic and let them travel the backroads and exactly find out where they think they're going to get sales or service to provide an online setting for our kids. So I mean, uh, it's easy to talk about, but, uh, in theory, but in practice, it becomes a whole different blog. I just want to make sure we're taking care of things here at school, doing things we need to do and, um, so that's why I want to touch on the coronavirus piece, so. Anybody any questions about what we're doing or not doing, so I would ahead pass this out now in regards to what the, what they may, what we may want to do. Just so teachers know and, and, and yours truly knows, um, number one on the list is payroll and other fiscal operations, for me, take a period, so. Let's get these priorities in order, so. Yeah, for Mark too, so.
Problems that will lose it.
Thank you.
Didn't do it.
Is it because you have a tree farm?
Once you've been on the board and you have twenty bucks.
Ms. Law, are you having any other, did you have any other?
I was just going to say, uh, we do the Florida trip every four years, we're slated for next year. They do give you deadlines of, of when you can get this much money back, that much money back. The other thing is, two trips ago, we had a bunch of people get sick. The cold, flu, whatever was going on, it affected one of the buses. We tried to isolate kids, I mean, nobody was seriously ill enough that they had to go to the hospital, but we were fighting it, parents would keep kids, you know, we'd take them to the infirmary at whatever park and let them sleep and take care of them as best we could, so, I mean.
Is that something where, especially that, it's a pretty significant outlay of money, I'm sure, um, is it an additional cost to buy like travel insurance, is that an option?
No, it's part of it, I think they offer, and I have to read through, um, I think you can purchase extra, but they do offer a liability insurance with it, um, I didn't get the, the, uh, quotes to Mr. Dick and to him in time to have it on tonight's agenda. I have my three quotes in, um, but they have, you know, different things and sometimes I think they do have it where you can buy extra insurance. So I, I can't, I could pull it up, I can't remember it right off the top of my head, it's, you, if it's, I want to say like ours is in February of twenty one, if we cancel by October of twenty, we get all the four hundred dollars of our money back. So, I mean, obviously that's still out in advance, you don't know what's going to be going on, flu wise or anything else, but it's up to a certain point, you get, you know, eighty percent back, you get this amount back up until like the day before, the day before you're done, you know, so you've got to make that decision. I've been reading on Facebook, Band Director's Facebook page, there's a lot of schools that are making their bands cancel trips. Some are, some aren't. Friend of mine from California has his band, has orchestra in New York City right now. No problems, but others are not allowed to go to the state next door. So just, it's all based on what you guys think is best.
Just statistically, we've had over eleven thousand flu deaths this year in the United States alone. We've had twenty-six coronaviruses.
In the United States?
I think the percentage is.
And I'm just finding this out.
As opposed to volume, is it? Percentage is a problem because it's like a few times as many people that get coronavirus die from it as opposed to, so like right now, it's not a high volume, but it's a high percentage of mortality rate. So I think that would be.
I think the item before us is to approve the state trip for the National Honor Society to approve them to get free.
Right, so that is, yes, that is the item we go back to and I can, I guess I would just reiterate what we just talked about, that any of these trips, if you pass, they definitely, they truly go back and look at the paperwork and see when is the kind of drop dead date, when they can get reimbursed if they have a kind of, if they decide they're ready to have to cancel something, but. With that in mind though, the motion is for approval of the NHS trip in early June, roll call.
Mrs. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Young? Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Item thirteen, discussion items, second reading, uh, A, budget reserve policy, attachment fourteen. It's our cash balance policy we.
We had had a, um, couple readings on this and so I wanted to make sure that at each of the discussions on the summer ninth and January thirteenth that we, I had put some of our notes from what we had talked about. We haven't gotten specific wording except for, um, the upon such notification wording. You know that Mrs. Song had talked about, she didn't like the word achieved, so we need to talk through this, try to get some wording on it. Behind us, I want to keep it in the. There's a lot to work to do on this, I thought. I don't know. That doesn't say a whole lot. It doesn't, I wanted to put the words in, um, in discussion, discussion in the past two meetings. There's no limits or anything in there.
At some point, we've talked about upper and lower limits, range of point one forty-five.
It's in the first paragraph.
Last, the last one in the first paragraph.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In January, we looked over that spreadsheet to show those percentages of where that took us.
And I believe when we, like, previously, Mr. Kern kind of touched on this, this doesn't mean that we have to take action on it, but it just needs to be brought to the attention of the board and kind of maybe discuss, look, look at it, this isn't, this isn't triggering action necessarily, it's triggering review.
Yeah, the written thing underneath the first paragraph says, but is that language that we might include there, upon such notification superintendent tread will provide proposed options that the board may consider?
Yes.
I think if this were triggering an actual action, that'd be one thing, but given that it's just triggering a review, it might be. Because it would be easy to kind of get down too far and go, we can overthink it.
So really the policy would stop after the superintendent and treasurer provide proposed options that the board may consider? That's the end of the wording of the policy, right?
Yeah, but then that next item down, that's about a time frame for a look period. Don't want to every month have that reviewed and brought to our attention or annually, is that what that's asking?
We had discussed that in December also.
Discuss that, what that.
Is it quarterly? Do it quarterly? Monthly seems almost a little bit much, whereas annually doesn't seem enough, quarterly would maybe hit the, hit a, hit a spot where there's enough substantive, you know, sample size we'd be looking at rather than having to run it month to month. I think quarterly would probably be a, a better timeframe.
Okay.
That's, a lot of other organizations have quarterly meetings or, you know, reviews of things like that, financials and whatnot.
And that could be something in the finance, um, treasurer's reports that we could put in there.
I would see that as well, because in some cases, we're, it's a month before we get the big slug of tax money and it might look like, well, gosh, based on that, we're going to go over, or if we get the big slug of bills that we're paying, but yes, if you spread it over at least, you know, three months, it'll average that out some.
And then it's a, I'm sorry, go.
I was just going to say, does it make sense to do it the month before the five-year forecast presentations and at the organizational meetings, you're starting off with that like at the beginning of the year? Then you got a few months before the five-year forecast report, you can do it ahead of that and then in the fall again, if we start the school year, I don't know, it might be nice benchmark to consider.
Okay, and that would, that would get us close to that.
Yeah.
Get closer quarterly.
Yeah, I mean quarterly is just.
Yeah.
More time than a month, but more frequent than, than. Sounds good.
So, and the other thing, I guess, I guess the wording for that first pair, the first sentence of the second paragraph, I would want to massage that one. It could be upon receiving indication that the, at any point within the current or subsequent fiscal year, that the cash balance will not fall within this range? The treasurer must report? But I'll bet, change the sentence around a little bit, but again, upon, uh, or I guess you could say, starting out at any point within the current or subsequent school year, upon receiving an indication that the cash balance reserve may not fall within the stated, the stated range.
I might just change it to main case. Just change the word to a main case, on achieved and maintained.
Upon receiving an indication of such cash balance.
Achieved makes it sound like.
I don't mean to.
That's a gold star, when I think, really, what we're saying is, this is where we want it to be. We wanna maintain it between the forty-five and fifteen. I don't know, are Brandon the one who did the policy more?
Yeah, it's not maintained.
Okay.
Anything else, then, about this one?
So, we'll get this cleaned up and brought back to you in April.
Yes, do you want it as a discussion or?
I think we can add as a discussion ten more times, so that we can, just make sure everybody's got it like it wants to be. All right, second reading for policy, K G, K G R, K G E, community use of school facilities, attachment fifteen.
Is this the second, or second reading?
Second reading.
Second reading.
Feeling like this one's pretty close.
Very close, we are, um, I think getting the needs met.
Do we wanna post this somewhere for a period of public comment? You get a, you get a feel for what the community thinks?
Are these not part of our minutes? When we publish on the website, propose policies, any changes to them?
I think the agenda gets posted, but not only attachments, right?
Right, but when we go in for the minutes, it's just usually what we've talked about are any changes and things, but it doesn't have the full-fledged policy on it.
I thought it had the full policy, okay.
I feel like, I mean, if, uh, given this is a pretty beefy policy, and that it's also somewhat of a hot topic, that there's a lot of community members that feel very strongly about it, might be worthwhile to post the proposed policy. Also, given that it's our second reading, and I think most of us feel pretty good about it. Um, any changes at this point, probably aren't gonna be massive changes, so maybe put it out there and let the community see it. And that's just a question, I'm not making a recommendation or, you know, I'm saying, what do you, what do you guys think?
Those of you who've had more discussion with people outside, outside, I, I know it's been a topic of discussion, but I've not, other than what we've heard in here, I've not really had anybody else talking my ear off about it so much, so.
I'm not sure if you posted a proposed policy and somebody would take into it or.
I have a question, on number twenty-three, you added Saturday and the end Sunday.
We don't have custodians on Saturday.
I thought we did have custodians on Saturday. Oh, okay.
We do not.
So.
Not, yeah, there's days that we might have.
They could still rent it on Saturday, but they have to pay the custodial fee, so it's open to them.
Yes.
Okay.
My like a service to Wernier about posting this one is posting this one. I mean, when we don't do it with the other ones.
Right, then we'd have to, we'd separate it.
I, I, that's my.
That's understandable. I also feel like, too, we've opened ourselves up to just getting the extremes.
Yes.
You know, like, you're not gonna get most of the people in the middle who don't have much of an opinion, they're not gonna speak to it, you're just gonna get the people who are strongly for or against it. So, I, that's why I wasn't really making a recommendation as much as just asking, hey, can someone else, you know, let me know what your thoughts are?
I always go back to being careful what we ask for, because, you know, and someone may get what they think is an incredible, helpful hint, and we don't use it, then they say, why did you ask for my input? And if you, yeah, I just, and again, it's a fine line of.
Never gonna make everybody happy.
No.
Okay. I suppose that really acquiring minds will ask.
Yes, exactly, and I've had.
And we've entertained, if, if we listened to public comment more than once here.
Can it be requested? I mean, if somebody wants, like, if someone's.
Yes, people have requested.
Oh, okay.
And I always say that's a document, that's a working document, it's just.
So, here, I'm sorry, I missed the discussion. See the addition here, on days that school is not in session, except for calamity days. It's kind of an all or nothing thing, where there are a lot of circumstances where the building on a calamity day is still being opened up to the public for other events that are taking place. Is there a way to account for that, or is there no desire to account?
No, it's not that, it's not that, there's no desire. I, I try to, so, like, we end up having a basketball game that night for our varsity basketball team, the building is open. Would it be scheduled as usual?
Is that what you're?
That's, yeah, that's the question, cause I've had a lot, I mean, we've had certainly circumstances where you've got someone who's scheduled the building, used the building that night, we have a calamity day, school's closed, but we ended up, the weather clears up enough, you still have a varsity basketball game in the building that night anyway, it's being opened up to the public, so you've got a situation where you've canceled the, the activity, the scheduled activity in the, in the gym adjacent, um, but the building is, you know,
they're for the public or actually for the.
Right, right.
I don't know if that's a way to account for that or not, uh, just an observation.
And, and, and I don't want this to become court, I, I serve you, so, I mean, if this is what this board wants, I have no problem, I understand what Mr. Prince coming from regards to, we now have the seventy-seven gym, well, yeah, that's probably one of the, have the issue, more than anything else would be the seventy-seven gym not get open because of.
This is open down.
Yeah, cause it's open for the varsity activity, um, but we can put that in there, that about, activities scheduled in seventy-seven gym, K two gym would not be available. You know what I'm saying, that way, it's the luck of the girl, if you had to have practice in the, this building, you would get to have practice, and I, I, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, it also becomes a slippery slope of, like, how do you make that decision, right? Like, if it does clear up, who makes that call? And, and, you know, you kind of get into this, is there a timeframe, is it based on?
Well, I mean, they are making the call in half, like, I mean, we make a decision.
Right.
It's, it's okay to have the varsity basketball game that night, so it's just, if that building is gonna be opened up anyway to the public.
Gotcha.
It kind of goes back to Mrs. Song's comment, it's apparent discretion, I mean, if we had practice that night for Biddy, mom and dad have to decide whether they wanna go on the roads and bring junior. I mean, it's just that, cause we would not have an activity here if we didn't have the sidewalks clean, parking lots clean, you know, custodians at employees, we would not.
Well, then, I'm in favor of that, because anytime you put the decision in the hands of the parents, I think that's the best case scenario. You let, you leave it up to them, and you're pushing that decision-making down to the lowest possible level, where the parents get to make the call.
So, I'm basically just, as the statement, on a calamity day, that if the building is, facilities are, are deemed to be suitable for school activities, then they could also be open for.
This is what I did, I'll work on that wording, so that we can, this is what I think we have, we need to understand, we're in a pretty good position right now in regards, this is not something that's pressing now, whether, but we have some time where it just becomes an issue again. I'll work on the wording of that calamity day piece, then we can look at it and see if it works or not, and if it creates more confusion than we think it should, then we may, well, do something else, okay?
I think there's still some word you need to talk about real quick.
Okay.
So, on twenty-three, on days school is in session, they can schedule at no charge, except for Saturdays and Sundays.
Yes.
Because, but then twenty-four says on days school is not in session, with the exception of calamity days. But they can't schedule on a Saturday or Sunday. Where does it say that if a youth sports team or whatever wants to schedule on a Saturday and they're willing to pay for it, they can do that? Where is that?
That's what twenty-four, I think, was supposed to.
Because. On day, on school days not in session, except, okay. Gathering where all the.
Twenty-five is where you reserve it with an hourly facility rental fee.
Okay.
So, I think, Mr. Dick, you need to account for Saturday down there, that's your intention, right?
No, twenty-five is for public events.
Things such as games, tournaments.
Yeah, that's not for practice, that's for games and tournaments.
Yeah, cause, yeah, well, I think the original policy is that we were gonna charge on a Saturday.
For practice.
That we weren't.
For practice.
That's what it seemed, that's what it seemed, that's what this is saying, looks like, you know, for item twenty-four, if, if it's a non-public event, in other words, a practice, they wouldn't be charged.
So, and that.
But that's only.
But if it's a public.
Monday through Friday. So, there's this whole Saturday where you have these gyms open, and if a youth team wants to pay for it, why not?
Yeah, I think it's, we're, yeah, and I think it's worth clarifying, too, because it was brought to our attention that some people get around that paying for it by calling it a, uh, instead of a practice, a, uh, an open gym, so that, you know, they're saying, well, we're gonna have open gym during this timeframe, and it's open to the public, anybody can come, so, you know, they don't have to pay for it. Um, but in reality, it was just a, a practice for all intents and purposes, so I think we need to.
And while due respect, they don't get to schedule their own open gyms.
That was just something that's gone up to me, if somebody said that that's happened in the past, that's all.
So, this is saying that nobody's here on Saturday.
Right, we have, we have teams here on Saturday.
So, who's doing the custodial work for our Saturday teams?
Our, our coaches, it's in all this policy, cause our coaches and our staff members can't take care of that.
Okay.
That's, they open it, they have the keys.
Okay.
But like Mr. Curran, so all we have to do is add Saturday to number twenty-five, is that correct? Does that take care of?
Well, I think you.
No, this twenty-five is public, a pub, twenty-five is so you can hold a tournament on a Saturday or Sunday.
Right, that would say we don't have it written here, is.
Yes, we do, we have that at twenty-five, but what we don't have is if you wanna practice on Saturday, so it's not a public event, public is not gonna come and watch you practice. It's just, we're gonna have Biddy basketball practice on Saturday morning.
Right.
We wanna reserve a gym. We don't have that part, isn't here.
Right, because the original intention of the policy, when I first drafted this piece, was to envision we, on a Saturday, we wouldn't charge for a practice.
But now we know that we don't have custodians here, so we do have to charge, but we need to make it available.
And see, this is where our varsity coach would come in very handy, if they were coming on Saturdays and open up for our ditties, well, I'd be here with them, you know what I'm saying?
And I thought, wasn't there someplace in the policy that said?
They have to stay.
I, I mean, I would support that, I, I mean, if you, at one point, I can't remember now, long and long, if there's a school-approved, right, representative who has access, you gain the proper scheduling, and you have a staff member who's willing to help provide the access, the key card access, that you could, that you could still use a facility.
Exactly.
But again, that comes down to.
I mean, one thing that does make sense is that might keep people from having a ton of extraneous practices that are unnecessary, you know, the, the topic was brought up, what happens if people just go nuts and practice six days a week, but if they have to have, you know, a varsity coach who is a member of the, you know, employed by the board, approve it and say, okay, I will come open it for you, but you need to show me where you haven't gotten time elsewhere during the week. That might help to some degree, kind of make sure that, that it passes a litmus test of, you know, is it legit or not, or you don't want to reward it or not. I don't wanna be invested anywhere.
Did you say twenty-five addresses the Saturday issue? I don't see that.
Twenty-five addresses a public event, a tournament or something, a game.
But, no, on Saturdays, it's written now.
Yes, it does.
Well, either way, cause they're gonna rent, they're gonna have, there's a rental fee, right?
Yeah.
Custodial fees, yeah.
Okay, actually, okay, so we don't have Disney a day, cause we don't have Saturday mentioned in twenty-five.
Right, the only thing we've mentioned on twenty-five is Sunday, you can't start.
Okay, that's right.
I would think anytime that you are opening it up to the public, you know, where spectators are gonna come watch, that should, there should be a rental fee applied to that, right?
That's why I make sure.
You definitely wanna have, you definitely wanna have a custodians specified for that, right?
That's correct.
You wouldn't wanna, I mean, you wouldn't want Biddy's teams to, like, just schedule a game on a Wednesday night in one of these facilities and bring members of the public in, you'd have to count.
I'll make sure.
Right.
Yes.
Great.
I don't know where to put that, that's up to you.
What's that?
How, where do you put that you can practice on a Saturday, that will let up, the schools open for Saturdays that you have to pay for, cause we don't have a custodial. Cause twenty-four is saying that it's at no cost to the organization, and that they can't do Saturdays and Sundays.
So, you would wanna change, you, you could allow it on Saturday.
Yes.
Under the condition that you have a.
That you need.
Board-approved or, or district-approved, and school employee helps coordinate access to the building, or something like that, right?
So, I guess, so twenty-four has to change.
Yeah, I'm gonna take out Saturday, schedule will not be played on Sundays.
But that's just under the.
That's for the practicing.
Because of, to, to.
Okay. All right.
But you don't, you, you don't wanna say at no cost, if you're gonna take out Saturday, because Saturday is going to be a cost, if they don't have somebody within the district who's gonna open the door for it and be responsible for it and be here.
Okay, I will.
You see what I'm saying?
So, you're accounting for the scenario where they say, I don't have someone to coordinate giving me access, but I still wanna reserve it.
There's a lot of Biddy teams that wouldn't have somebody here at the school who's gonna give them access and stay here and be responsible for them while they practice.
Yeah, okay, I was just saying about basketball wise, I guess, so, I, I see what you're saying, yeah.
But the same for Biddy basketball.
Sure.
I mean.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you would hope that the varsity basketball coach is overseeing that, as their job description calls.
Overseeing it and being here and the key card access is a big difference.
Yeah, I understand, good point, I understand.
I mean, I don't care, I'm just saying, I wanna make it so that.
But we, we wanna roll this out and make it correct and be right.
Yeah, especially during their, so, you know what I'm saying, we know. Yeah. There you go.
You didn't sign up for this.
All right, well, obviously, there are still a few tankings to happen to this, so we'll have it back for yet another reading. So, give it another fine-tooth comb and make sure for next time, if there's any additional things, or actually, better yet, if you have any additional thoughts or whatever, let JB know before.
Yep.
Before the next time, so we can make those tankering in the next reading, so. Uh, first reading, policy I J, I J A, career advising, attachment sixteen.
This one highlighted sentence goes along with the new seals that will begin with the class of twenty-twenty-three, which is this year's fresh. Those seals we discussed earlier during the critical council will be, I'll make sure Mr. Hampton discusses the seals at our April critical council. But that, that plan has to involve how we're getting those seals and what we're gonna, what we're gonna do to get there, so.
Issues with that one? The next one would be G B C B, staff conduct, attachment seventeen.
I recently received the license code of professional conduct for Ohio educators, which is mentioned in the last sentence of the first paragraph. This will become a part of the staff handbook, um, so that they have it, um, and it, it speaks to this particular license code of professional conduct for educators, so that's, uh, there's, I think there's ten of them, and then break them all down to what each one are, some of them are very general, but it allows, there's a line in them, so, um, you're more than welcome to afford to, you know, copy and see, you know, what, what, what they, what they are about, um. Any questions? This is not greatly changed from what they've been in the past, so, it's just a little more specific in, in regards to what they've done in the past.
Is there anything else with that one? Is there anything else with that one? We'll be on to policy I G E E, awarding high school diplomas to veterans of war, attachment eighteen.
And as far as it came up, they did not include the Korean conflict or the Vietnam conflict, and they have written language with them both in there now. It talked, there was one time specifically spoke to Ohio residents, it's no longer about only being a Highland, a higher resident. It, it truly opens up more opportunities for the people who have served, have given of, of their, of, I guess, their life at the time in order to defend our country, and allows them to be recognized now.
And this is basically just adjusted based on what the state.
Yes, this is the, all their suggested, OSBA's suggested languages, to take out, um, it, sometimes, it was kinda convoluted to a point, and it's, it's, I guess it's made a very general now, and it allows more people, or us to honor more people.
Um, I have a question, in the first paragraph, it says that it could be, um, awarded posthumously.
Yes.
But number two says they had to have received an honorable discharge, well, if they died in the war, I mean, wouldn't have gotten an honorable discharge, they would have passed away serving their country, and that if the family wants it.
But would the family have been given a honorable discharge at the deceased's?
I don't know.
Yeah, you do.
Is it considered a discharge if you're deceased and the military?
You do, yeah, you did, you would get a honorable discharge. You don't, you're not, uh, you, the only case where that might, where what you're talking about might happen is if they went missing in action, because the status for a service member who's missing in action is different from the status.
Right.
Of a member who is known to be deceased, if you're deceased, you're gonna get a B two fourteen, yeah, discharge.
Okay, okay, I didn't know if they actually discharged you if you were deceased.
You do, MIA, you do not.
Right, I just wanna make sure we're not excluding a group of people.
Sure, okay.
Why doesn't this include, um, the Gulf War and stuff, because did you have to have a diploma by that time to go into the military?
Was there?
I think you would have had to, I would.
By that time, they did not take you unless you had.
And did they have a draft?
Okay.
I think if it, if there's no draft, then there's probably not gonna be anybody that's, um, because I think the idea here is to get people who were taken from, from high school, probably eighteen-year-olds who were not afford the opportunity to finish, and it wasn't their choosing, you know, whereas in any other situation like Gulf War, where it was not, we were volunteered from military, not a draft.
Okay.
So. Somebody wanted to drop out, there's anything, but that's on there.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we weren't excluding a group, that's all.
Good question.
All right, anything else with that one? So those are all first readings for those three, so, once anybody else comes up with anything regarding those, we'll do a second reading next meeting.
This is, um, just like, you said Gulf War, and what was that one?
Uh.
It's personal, they're saying, they're saying for a conflict, they're, yeah.
All right, other discussion items. The meta issue that we wanted to just talk about, capital assets discussion.
So part of our management letter with our audit, um, was a couple recommendations and, um, a non-compliance on the uniform guidance, so that came through with meta. So meta, um, is who we go to, uh, for some bidding for our buses and food service. So with our food service, because it's through a federal program, uh, the federal procurement guidelines had to be changed up by a certain date. Um, and meta did not have those changed up by that date, they had the federal procurement, but they did not have them updated. So, um, anyone who went through and used any federal funds with the bidding process through meta was dinged on this throughout the state of Ohio. Um, so, uh, we were one of those, we, uh, used our federal funds with commodities and things through there. So that's why that non-compliance finding is in there, because inadvertently, with us, we had ours done, but meta did not have theirs. So that's where that non-compliance came in. Um, so then, because of that, then the recommendations basically said, okay, well, if you're not going to get it from them, and they can't supply that to you, you should have your own. Uh, we do have our own now, we have a rubric that we have, uh, been using, it's one of the rubrics that we use with our state monies for our group. So that's already in place, so we can show all of that for this year, um, along with meta's, um, purchasing guidelines of how they do their bidding process, so we're good on that. And you'll see that, um, in our responses to the management letter, we put that information in there. The other recommendation then, does anyone have any other questions on meta, what they do for us, okay? So the other recommendation was the segregation of duties on the capital assets, so basically, um, when they were looking at it, we've been doing the same thing for years, and they were saying that, uh, my office does, um, many things to the point of, we don't want to, um, we wanna manage our internal controls, so my office ends up doing all of this. So one of the things that we've started doing is, uh, putting those off with, um, Mrs. Markowski, so she's starting to go through, and when we have those purchase orders, um, she is getting those sheets ready, the staff members who then are purchasing that, uh, they're taking care of the tag numbers, making sure that they're on there and signing off that it's done. We are looking at is a, um, inventory control system, the E I S system, which is also through meta, uh, that will be put in place for next year. Um, and one of the other things that we're going to do is the depreciation, I've done the depreciation on that, um, and they would like to see that, that is one thing that they would like to see go out. So by going ahead with valuation engineers and having them do the depreciation on that at the end of each fiscal year, uh, that will take that away from our office and will, uh, put it back into an internal control that they're having for the auditing. Um, the other thing on that is, we don't really have to change any policies, the policies are pretty, um, general on that, it's our written controls that we've just got to adjust, and those are basically narratives that we have to give the auditors of the process of, uh, different things in our, um, treasurer's office. So we have a payroll narrative, we have a food service narrative, we have a, um, uh, budgeting narrative, we have purchasing narratives, and so this is one of those, uh, narratives that we would then make sure that a third-party vendor is doing that, and that will put us back into compliance.
I think we need to have it more gen, more than just general, that it needs to be something written rather than, I, I'm not sure what your narrative means, that, um, I mean, when an auditor comes in and asks us questions, then yeah, that's a narrative that we have with them, but we also have it in our policy, this person, not this, this position does X, this position, it, a separate position is the one that, um, checks to make sure that it's correct. The same person putting in the invoice can't be the same person that's cutting the check and mailing it and saying, yeah, that's in my inventory, correct. So it doesn't have to be elaborate, but we need to have those internal controls spelled out, so that the auditors can look at it and say, oh, this is how you do it, is this how it worked? And that way, they're assured, rather than having to write it down, and then they find out, oh, wait a minute, same person did this, this, and this, which the audit, it's the recommendation, and that's, that was very concerning to me.
So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and pull the, um, inventory, uh, policy, we'll look at that, I'm gonna pull our narratives of how we've got to put it in. It's in our, it's not really a CAFR report, but it's the main report that goes out, so those narratives are in there, um, and so we'll go ahead and pull that out and kinda merge those, and we can bring that for a discussion item in April then.
Okay.
Audit committee or something, you know?
Yeah, we can look at it at the audit committee.
So that we are working at it.
Okay. We can do that.
And your discussion of meta.
You mentioned that meta is involved in that part too, also?
They, they can be, they have a, a software, it's called E I S, it's the, uh, Lantoc inventory system. And so when you go in, right now, we have ours under with spreadsheets, um, we have had valuation engineers give us when, um, originally, a couple treasurers prior to, that we've got the, the reports on what is in there. So I like the E I S system, because we're able to go ahead and put it in our system when we can revert back to the requisitions and the purchase orders also, because it's in part of state software, and then I can run reports off of those, so that the teachers at the end of the year are able to know what is in their classroom, sign off on it also. Um, it gives us that ability to be able to do that much easier than, uh, the other ways that we've had to do, so I like that part of that system.
So meta is a software, it's not, or is it a company?
Meta is an organization that we are members of, yes, and they have different, through the state, software packages, like the fiscal software, our progress book is through that, um, we get, um, cheaper wifi rates, uh, things like that.
We can bid the buses through them, we can bid, we can purchase supplies through them, they do the, basically the front loading of getting bids for us.
Yes.
Think of it as G S A.
Are you, are you concerned that they weren't prepared and didn't adequately follow the federal procurement guidelines? I mean, that seems like kinda basic function for a procurement.
It bothered me that we got dinged for their mistake too, like I thought of that.
Through the, um, I think it's, I forget which CAFR it is, that's one of the, um, guidelines that we have to follow through, might be GOSB. Um, through that, because we have an agreement with them, and we're telling them that we're part of that membership and we want them to do that bidding for us, we take on that responsibility of making sure that they have taken care of what they're supposed to take care of. Um, I will also say that during that time, there, they had fiscal officer transitions, um, I think a couple of different ones in the past couple of years, and so that, I, I, as I understand, um, it's, those are the times for fraud to happen.
I don't know if anybody else read about that, but it was, it was stuff, not Toronto.
Transitions are the worst time.
No, it's, I, I understand.
First article, when I Googled meta, the first article that came up was the issues surrounding that change from one CEO or whatever to the other, and the problems that arose from that.
I, as I understand with all, with those, um, I guess what the transition that's happened and things, it was, uh, the, the policy got dropped. And so it's caused us to make sure that our policy and internal controls are definitely checking up on theirs, and so that's something that we'll be able to do. I know there are numerous other schools in the state that might go through meta, um, to do that, so they'll be taking care of that also.
How are we, I mean, what is our plan to do that?
So at the beginning of each fiscal year, we are able to go in, and we have a contact there that we'll be able to ask to make sure if any policies and things are updated, and for them to give us when they do their bids, so when you guys approve that we're going to go into a bus bid or something like that, and they give that information to us, we can then ask and say, we'd like to see the rubric of how you, uh, did this bidding process and the policy that you followed with it. So all of that will be incorporated into that bidding, and then we can hand that over to the auditors when they come.
And that policy is the one that would have agreed with the federal regulations or whatever they didn't have in place this time. So our delegates with them is going to be checking them.
Yes, absolutely.
And there is a question, provide like some sort of written confirmation that yes, they've done it.
They've already, uh, given all of us ring confirmation that they have taken care of that.
Do we get confirmations from their auditors?
Their auditors are also the state auditors. So that's something that.
Are they audited by?
I believe so, because they, I believe so, I'll check with our auditors. But that was one of the things when our state auditors were in, they were talking with meta on that, so it, it has been taken care of. They even sent the board minutes out, I believe, on all of that too, to all of the school districts.
They've not audited, I don't know if it's something that happens later, but, but they, they were audited, and they're still, it's actually pending from two thousand and sixteen, so.
Does it say who the auditor?
It just says legal action pending the Ohio auditors, since the audit is ongoing, they, your office declined to discuss details. So they're still looking at it, yeah.
And I think that's really why it went to management letter instead of on the audit, is because it was widespread, it wasn't our, just our school district or anything like that, so, that's why they put it in there.
You still don't wanna make it?
Absolutely, no, I, no, hardly, I know.
In the auditor.
We have it last year. On management letters, I think we had a recommendation, but I'd have to look and see what that is.
It wasn't that easy.
No, no.
No, no.
And the alternative to these metas is doing it all ourselves, right?
We have.
Or is there another?
We have to have an A site.
We have to have an A site for technology.
That's what you just, we had that earlier in the meeting, right?
Yes.
Looked at what that equivalent one was, if they were.
No, different one.
But it was bad, it wasn't.
No, that's right, it was, uh, comp management, sorry, that's right, it's comp.
Yes, but annually, we have to, or, uh, within a certain period, we have to, to be a member of an A site, they're the ones that give us our.
How many competitors do they have?
Yeah.
Um, it depends on how far out you wanna go, LACCA is one, but LACCA also does not have the volume power that meta does. I don't even know if they co-op that, so.
What's one that Ross County uses?
CEVAC, is it CEVAC?
I think it is CEVAC.
Yeah, and I, I will check to make sure, to confirm, but I believe, Mike Sir City uses LACCA for all of their, for their A site, but I believe they go through meta for their co-op, so.
Well, I mean, to keep talking to us about this, because I, I mean, that's, that seems like a really basic thing to drop the ball on, I mean, federal procurement guidelines on food service should be a, in the wheelhouse of a procurement pooling agency, right, I, I mean.
Twenty-nine million.
That's concerning to me, so, I mean, hopefully they've got it fixed, and I understand there's transitions and things like that, but I just ask for you to like, stay on top of them, and if there's considerations we need to make for looking to bid this out and other alternatives, I'd, I'd be interested in how you were proceeding and responding to this, I feel like that's a pretty basic thing that shouldn't have happened.
And the response should have been immediate and, and very to the point, this has been fixed by X, all, you know, all of the points, whatever, whatever the odds percent they were deficient on, and same with the capital, we, we need to have the response, and it will be fixed by X date.
But I also have this much problem with the auditors, they're not addressing the fact, I mean, I'm not saying they haven't addressed it, but they knew this wasn't us.
Yeah, but.
But that's kinda like, you know, the kids, hey, hey, mom, if everybody else is doing it, so that would lie for me either, if everybody else got caught, then.
It bugs me that we have to pay them, but that we're responsible for checking up on them, because if I'm, you know what I mean, like?
That seems a little.
What am I paying you for, if I have to follow behind you and make sure you're doing everything, that's a lot of work, I mean.
And we pay the auditor, and now the auditor's saying, you didn't do, you know, you don't have a clean audit, because we have these recommendations, so, yeah, we've paid two different places. Interesting.
Thanks. All right, anything else with that? It's like we have two items there that are similar, G abolishing policy, I G C I, transitional kindergarten abolish policy, I G C C I R, transitional kindergarten regi, regulations, and exhibit I G C I E.
Just, I will bring it to you next month to have a, a motion, this is something we instituted in two thousand and three or four, and, um, we no longer use it. three or four, and, um, we no longer use it, and it's, it's pretty expensive, but we did it through the community schools, so. I just soon have it off of books so that people aren't asking when you're going to start changing it from kindergarten room again, so I just wanted to make sure that we I explained what we're doing, wanted to let you know what we were doing.
So we just have to do an official?
Yes.
Motion and so forth at the next meeting? Coronavirus is already done, is there any other discussion items, anybody? Otherwise, we have, uh, proof, a motion to adjourn session for the purpose of discussing the discipline of a public employee collective bargaining.
Hi, Booth.
Just move, sir.
Sir.
Suzanne. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Mrs. Psalm?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
We'll just stay here.
That was my only thought, was make sure we don't forget to turn that off. Because everybody's going. JB, is that what you're doing, or you're going?